Do at will for the chapter managers. Some might prefer that. Some might like what we've been doing, you know, for the past, you know, I guess 21 out of the 26 years where chapter officials have been supervising in some capacity. And so, again, I think if we narrowed it down, and you helped me do that, and, you know, we can certainly flesh out some of the other things, you know, talking about some of the things that chapters want, you know. If we don't, if we say that we like either Model 2 or 4, and we keep the non-LGA-certified chapters, they can't enter into county agreements. You know, I think there's a meeting later today talking about agreements with the county regarding senior funds, you know. And so, I've expressed my thoughts on, you know, the way the LGA is written that restricts that from happening. And so, you know, these are real world, you know, these are everyday problems that we face with. And if we keep that system, then hey, the leaders and the people have spoken. But if we wanted to facilitate the, you know, the goals of what chapters are thinking about, you know, if you look at the, again, I'm going back to the Eastern Navajo Agency Council Plan of Operation. It's, the legislation is now. I've submitted comments on it to Ms. Khan already. And, you know, it's not much different from what Giselle Jean wanted to do in 2011, which have the chapters themselves collaborate. That's what they want. So those things are expressions of what they want. If that's what they want, then what we should support is Model 1s and 3. You know, if that's really what they really want, then, you know, all, you know, Central Agency Council has a plan of operation that was already passed that's similar. Northern Agency has another one that's similar. And so, if that's what they want, then Models 1 and 3 would cater to them. But if we're gonna be kind of like holding on to the reins, saying, no, we shouldn't give that amount of authority to chapters, then if you're on that side of the boat, then hey, you know, move forward with Model 2 or 4. You know, so those are some of the ways to address it. You know, these are, again, I think a lot of comments. But some of the things that, you know, were talked about, it's already in the draft. You know, giving chapter presidents the power to express power. Black and white, they have power to declare a state of emergency for their chapter area. That's in both drafts. It's gonna be in all drafts. And so, and then the hurdle that you're talking about, delegate, Bigay, that's what your predecessors wrote 26 years ago, you know. Unfortunately, we have to work within, you know. So none of the proposals are gonna be easy to pass, you know. So I talked about those three ways to amend the LGA. And, you know, they're all not easy. But if we get continued support and one model rises above the other, or, you know, regionalization rises above all of them all, you know, whatever the case may be, you know, we, I'm just supporting change that benefits chapters at the local level. Many of you know, my late mom was a chapter president. She had all these ambitions. She wanted so much progress for her community. And she would say, "Son, can I do this as a chapter?" Say, "No, Mom." You know, the LGA says this. You know, and so, when I talk to chapter officials and chapter staff that have all these goals for their community, and they just want to better their communities, many of them, a majority of them, want change for their community. How do I, how do I help that to hap, how do I promote that? How do I, you know, in her legacy, how do I help chapters flourish, as the LGA said 26 years ago? So that's basically how I would respond, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Rickay, Mr. Mitchell, and also Mr. Sosi.
Thank you again. Ado here, national, I could, bahot, see, ki, ado delegate, Ness, thank you. I could, I, and, see, I need, I don't, delegate, so, I could, I, ha, see, though, in, ha, ta, ya, the, has, ki, le, da, I, I need, I don't, those, oh, who, so, le, da, queen, sent, the, la, da. But then again, you have to really respect, put in a policy in place that will affect your Navajo people. I don't, and, I could, oh, she, eh, de, but, I, oh, the, from community development. One thing that I will put out there is, you know, no matter what law we put in place, what option, you know, we still have that staffing issues. As we all know, right now, we only got two staff at the chapter. I don't, we have vacancies at the chapters. Back in November, eh, eh, ya, we had 47 vacancies, 47. That's almost a quarter percent of the total chapters. I don't, she, I, what, this, is, with the executive order that President put in place, where division can do their own qualification assessment. So from April on to today, we're doing our own qualification assessment. So that 47 vacancies, as of last week, we got it down to 16 vacancies. So staffing is an issue. I don't, that square, when at the audit, if there's an audit issue, because of the checks and balance, eh, I, the, hona, na, with the staffing, if you have one less staff, you know, it is a problem. I don't, and, eh, ya, you know, going forward, eh, eh, we'd like to, how do we retain these employees? Although, one of the things is the pay. Human Resources is working on a pay classification plan. And I told the people that are doing the studies, I said, "We need to up the pay for folks that are working at the chapters, the CSCs, the chapter managers, and then also the AMS." Because right now, you know, if there's a higher paying position usually, the CSC or the AMS will leave for the high paying position. So that's how, one of the things that we have in mind in retaining our staff at the chapter. Eh, do, eh, ya, up, and, eh, the, no, see, could, retention, and then also filling all these vacancies. Eh, eh, yah, hun, so, the, I could, bahan, ah, na, sit, oh, eh, thank you.
Mr. Sosi.
Yeah, te. She, Harrison Sosi, in she, Office of Navajo Government Development.
The general answer is, yeah, let's keep chapters. Most people said, it's something we're used to, we know how to, we operate under them, they do some good out here, so let's keep chapters. So at least we have that answer, based on this survey. Then you move forward, what kinds of authorities should chapters have? And the primary, we've had a couple of seminars and we asked chapters. The first thing chapters say, as we want freedom. So, what do I mean by freedom? Remember, these Europeans, they sailed across the ocean from Europe and other places and colonized here in the United States. They were looking for freedom. And freedom means autonomy, being able to take action without having to answer to somebody else. But, the problem we have with chapters is they always have to answer to somebody else, which is the Navajo Nation government. And what we've heard from chapter officials is, we have to answer to this heavy hand that's over us all the time. They control our money, they control our staff, they control any and everything we do. We want freedom, we want autonomy, is what they're telling us. So the question is, how do you give that to them? These are the kinds of basic questions that we're looking at. And our charge is not to look at the LGA and put Band-Aids on the LGA. Our charge is to, from this day forward, look for new opportunities and possibilities. So what are the opportunities and possibilities for chapters into the future? They want certain types of governance, direct or indirect. Then the next question is, they want freedom, they want autonomy. They don't want their dollars to go through the Navajo Nation accounting system. They're saying that that takes too long. If you funnel the monies that they receive through the Navajo Nation system, the payments are lagging, way behind. And they sit on making payments. Those are the kinds of things that chapters are saying. Whether it's true or not, I don't work in the accounting department, so I don't really know. But nevertheless, this is what is the sentiments that they're raising. The other thing about control over the employees, they want the ability to control all of the workers that work for the chapter. They want to control those workers from the Navajo Nation central government that are stationed out there. They want authority to manage those people. So these are the things that they're looking for. And our charge is to flesh this out and see exactly what they're looking for and say, okay, how can we accomplish those kinds of desires? One of the things that we're looking at, rather than making the chapter, if you look at a person, what chapters really are right now, the way I explain it, they're an arm. If you see one person, they're an arm of the Navajo Nation government. So, the real mind for them is the central government. They don't have the freedom and they don't have the autonomy. So one of the things that we're looking at is to say, okay, rather than being attached as an arm of the Navajo Nation, [speaking Navajo] and there's examples of that, like corporations, municipalities. [speaking Navajo] Where you're not an arm of the Navajo Nation. That way you can have freedom and get away from your mother or your father and stand on your own over here. But, in order to do that, they'll have to have a revenue source, they'll have authorization to do certain things. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking at and hopefully at the end, we'll put together some. And the last charge that we have is, we have the responsibility to bring forth a proposal for the Navajo people to vote on. So we're hoping to do that here in the near future. So that'll be the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Sosi. We will have two delegates in queue for comments input to as well. Chair Nez?
Chapter manager, [speaking Navajo]. And in one of the models, [speaking Navajo] appointment by chapter president. To me, at the local level, the oversight is defined as the three chapter officials. So, I would think that, I also remember the law stating where the chapter president will have the authority to make a recommendation for an appointment to the community land use planning committee. It's a recommendation, [speaking Navajo] as an appointment, doesn't say that the chapter president will appoint it or need it. Of course, a lot, so as a chapter official recently, I used to be a chapter president and the word, the key word is to recommend a person for this appointment to Club C. It comes before the chapter. A resolution, they confirm that person. Of course, at, eh, you have, do you, chapter president or chapter officials being the oversight will say, okay, we're done with you. Go and tend to your life. Without any due process of law. They're very professional. I was thinking, we had a discussion a few years ago, and I believe it was you, with you, Mr. Begay, what if we recommend, or chapters recommend, a contract with the chapter manager? Annual contract, based on their monthly employee performance evaluation. Do you, [speaking Navajo] your weak areas, these are your strong points and I don't, that, do you? Chapter resolution. To remove a chapter manager by chapter resolution, I totally just don't agree with that part. Due process, [speaking Navajo] other personnel, [speaking Navajo] do you, [speaking Navajo] there's disciplinary actions, [speaking Navajo] chapters, [speaking Navajo] FMS personnel, [speaking Navajo] progressive discipline, [speaking Navajo] Yeah, and, I go. Do you, eh, da? Anything, being disrespectful to the community, [speaking Navajo] you approach the manager and you tell him, [speaking Navajo] You verbally warn, [speaking Navajo] I'm gonna verbally warn you, but I'm gonna follow through with a document saying that I provided you a verbal warning. That was step number one, as I remember. Step number two, eh, you take disciplinary action. But there again, Mr. Begay, the FMS, for some, it does say, before you take disciplinary action, you get legal advisement from the Department of Justice. What I, eh, give, it was the letter of reprimand, that's what it was, the number two. Number three was disciplinary action. [speaking Navajo] We're gonna put you on leave for 14 days. 14 days, [speaking Navajo] we're gonna put you on leave, you either give that person a pay during that period of time or don't give them pay. So it's a disciplinary action that happens. [speaking Navajo] What I, eh, give, that's where the FMS really needs to be amended in some areas. I don't, [speaking Navajo] one thing that I just don't agree with, Mr. Sosi, is the Office of Navajo Government Development. Eh, government reform, [speaking Navajo] we're still operating on a temporary government. Of course, eh, the, [speaking Navajo] this is where the people decided by referendum to say, 24, [speaking Navajo] of course, [speaking Navajo] of course, [speaking Navajo] and I'm glad that you mentioned, [speaking Navajo] standalone government. There's Tuba City. [speaking Navajo] That chapter could probably, [speaking Navajo] or so, could probably operate on its own if they had tax ordinance. [speaking Navajo] Chinli, the same way. Right here also, [speaking Navajo] St. Michael's could have a tax ordinance and [speaking Navajo] Crown Point, [speaking Navajo] these chapters, the host chapters there, should really get assistance on how to have a tax ordinance approved. [speaking Navajo] And I'm glad that you brought that up. And the chapter standalone government, [speaking Navajo] I would think that those four would qualify, but the others wouldn't. Because they would need money from Windorot to get allocation. I don't, do you? Office of Navajo Government Development, commissioners, [speaking Navajo] Do you, chapters, reforms, [speaking Navajo] there is a possibility of a conflict of interest because they get paid a stipend from the chapters. [speaking Navajo] Maybe the commissioners need to be someone from each of the agencies who are not affiliated with the government. [speaking Navajo] They would remain neutral as to how they would see, looking to the future. How are we gonna fund some of these programs? So we need to start planning and thinking of ways to do something. Downsize, or put two chapters together, make one, and come up with a plan like that. This is where I think the Office of Government Development Commissioners would be most effective in looking at it. This is my own opinion. do you, [speaking Navajo] do I, [speaking Navajo] the, [speaking Navajo] we are survivors. [speaking Navajo] The Great Depression, [speaking Navajo] So these things had happened back during the Great Depression. I know as native people, we are survivors. We don't wanna bankrupt the Navajo Nation. Earlier, I had mentioned too, Mr. Sosi, [speaking Navajo] we may have to look into using the permanent trust fund. Back to you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chair Nez. Next, we have Chair Parish.
Thank you, Speaker Curly. And good afternoon to our colleagues in the 25th Navajo Nation Council. Before I begin, I just want to make a quick announcement for those that are listening. I know we have a Budget and Finance Committee work session planned at 1:00 PM. It was originally planned for the council chambers, but we're setting up in the Budget and Finance Conference Room. So while our staff is setting up the Zoom and all the technology in the conference room, I wanted to make a recommendation to the [inaudible] work session with just one comment. I'll be listening online and to the recording for any responses from Division of Community Development, Department of Justice, or Office of Governmental Development. And so I just wanted to make that quick announcement before I begin. So, to our presenters today, thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation you provided on the Title 26, Recommendations on the Models. But I wanted to put on the record and ask on the record about any discussion regarding townships across the Navajo Nation. In my district, there are three chapter houses, but one township. What are the recommendations from the three bodies here? The Division of Community Development, Department of Justice, and our Government Development Office? Because it sounds great to really consider major amendments to Title 26. But when you're discussing local governments, you can't forget the interaction with the township. So what are the recommendations and the positions that you have to this regard to local governance? Because as Chair Rick Nez had mentioned about tax ordinances, the Kanta Township has those ordinances in place to collect taxes. Their relationship is defined with the Division of Community Development to some extent. But what is the definition? What is the modernization of the definition to the Division of Economic Development? And because they have their own tax dollars, they have their own fire department. So what is the local government, what is the townships? What is your recommendation to modifying, modernizing these laws to make sure that those local governancees that are producing tax dollars can contribute to public safety? What are your recommendations? Because local governance is not just about chapter elected officials. It's also about how we service and care for our people at the local government. So if we're generating tax dollars at the local level, what are your recommendations in your capacities? And to resource and development as well? What in the committee, Resource and Development Committee, what are your recommendations to continue to modernizing these policies? Because as the council delegate who works with the three chapters of Kanta, Denehoto and Chilchimbito, there's a unique relationship with the township. So, they, they're learning how to work with one another, but we need laws to support that. So we need laws, or if you're talking about reform entirely of all the discussion of, some of the discussion today was about regionalization concepts. And what does that look like, including the Kanta Township? Including townships across the Navajo Nation? I wanted to state that for the record because that can't be forgotten. So my recommendation is to do more research to include that as a strong recommendation because that will also have to be included in order for me to vote on this legislation. If there are any amendments to Title 26, I need those recommendations. So thank you, Speaker Curly, that's all I have. I'm gonna go to the Budget and Finance Work Session, but I'll listen to the recording, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Parish, for also a recommendation to look into some of the policy recommendations on how the townships and also the chapters work aside adjacently and also some budget allocations, recommendations in regards to either economic development or also public safety. So, Mr. Begay, I don't know if you have any reflections on some of those or on Chair Nez's comments?
Yeah, Nana. With regards to the comment on the appointment power and the confirmation procedure, it was always the plan to have the president appoint only, you know? And then it's up to the community, or if you have an AFOG, it's up to their council representative body to do the confirmation. So that was always the intent, just as it stated in Section 1000, 1001B1, I believe it's D. So, chapter presidents, they do have recommend, the power to recommend and appoint to standing committees of the chapter. That's been a law policy since, from the 1980 Plan of Operation that I talked about earlier. So that would continue to be in place regarding the Model 2 that proposes, or is it Model 3? Model 3, Model 3 that proposes the appointment of the chapter manager position. With regards to due process, you know, certain positions, especially at, you know, certain positions that we have here on the Navajo Nation, they are at will. And so, you know, and then I explained earlier that certain alternative forms of government that chapters have today is at will. It's already there. I'm not introducing anything new. The only thing I'm introducing is the concept of appointment and at will for all chapters. That's the only thing that's different. Otherwise, it already exists for some chapters. So, yes, there is a progressive disciplinary process. If you're not at will, if you're a regular status employee under any of the employment manuals, there is a recommendation of, you know, what can happen in the event of a disciplinary action being issued. And so what I have on the screen is under Option 1. Option 1, again, has the chapter president or vice president as a supervisor. One of the things that you said was that there is a policy that DOJ has to approve or review a disciplinary action. There's no such policy. You know, one of the things that, you know, it's highly recommended, you know, and, but there's really no enforcement or no, I guess, express requirement for DOJ review. And that's what hurts us. We don't have anything in black and white saying, you shall do this. You shall present your disciplinary action to DOJ. And so, what I have on the screen is a, some language that proposes to do that very thing. So here, under the chapter president's authority, when we're talking about duties and responsibilities, is to serve as the primary supervisor of the chapter manager. And here, the vice president would be, could be delegated, but the president would be the primary supervisor. And it further says that supervision won't extend to other chapter employees. It's only to the chief executive of the chapter. It's only to the chief executive of the chapter. And then it says, prior to issuance, all disciplinary actions shall be reviewed by the Department of Justice or the chapter's attorney. So we, so I'm proposing language like this to, to make things more, you know, very expressive. There's no question or vagueness about it, that you do have to go through DOJ, or if you're, if you're LGA certified and you have your own attorney, that you need legal counsel to ensure that the action that you're going to take is legal. Because, you know, I always tell the story that when the chapters, chapter official was sworn in this last administration, four years ago, that a day later, they wanted me to help them fire their, their, you know, their, their staff. You know, but no justification, you know? Where, where is your justification for, you know, their, your? So it's to combat those types of things when, you know, they, they basically take things into their own hands and, and try to effectuate what, and I don't know what the underground story is, why they just want to get rid of the person. But, you know, that's what happens, and that's re, that's reality. And so how do you combat some of those things? Because yes, there is a due process, you know? Normally, that should take care of some of the things that are happening out there. But, you know, that's why we impose the whole training process for chapter officials. But that's only for non-LGA certified chapters. So, you know, but if they're LGA certified, then they follow their personnel policies. And right now, all chapter managers fall, they are subject to their personal policy. They are subject to progressive discipline. Chapter officials, they, if they're a designated local supervisor for an LGA certified chapter, they should seek DOJ assistance when reviewing their disciplinary action form. But there's nothing in black and white. It's that you shall do that. And so that's why I've created proposals like this, that just spells it out very clear. So that's regarding that comment. And then on, just very briefly on what Chair Parrish was talking about. I think we, you know, that this work session is great, but I really think that we really need to understand more of the history, more of the background of how Kanta Township came to be. And then earlier, I tried to explain what home rule meant. Because in 2003, this body passed legislation to make the township permanent as a home rule municipality. So what does that mean? Because if you look at the United States, and they have different home rule municipal systems, if you do the research, then there are variations of what that means. So, you know, even though they call themselves a township, they are essentially a home rule municipality. They have all legislative, executive, and judicial powers, except those reserved by the Navajo Nation. And then the only other reservation is laws of general applicability. So for example, Kanta Township cannot create their own criminal, criminal laws, because that's a law of general applicability under Title 17 of the Navajo Nation Code that applies generally across the whole Navajo Nation. So that's an example of how the township operates. They do have a great amount of authority. And when, again, I'm, I'm going back in history. In 1995, when the Office of Navajo Government Development issued their memorandum proposing a Local Governance Act, they essentially wanted all chapters to be able to go through a charter system to become LGA, to become a home rule, to gain all the authorities. But that didn't happen, like I said this morning. Council didn't want to give up a lot of their duties and responsibilities, because that's what chapters would have gained if they became home rule. And so, so that now we have the LG that we have today. But in 2003, like I said, council approved Township as a home rule municipality. And so in turn, they received a great amount of authority. And there's one Navajo Nation Supreme Court case that goes into some explanation of what that might mean on the Navajo Nation. And so, you know, the township has a great amount of authority. Now, going back to, it, it's almost like they have exclusive authority within their boundaries. And that's what happened in 2003. But if you read the concept paper for the Kanta Township from 1995, or 1985, I'm sorry, 1985, if you read the concept paper, the plan, original plan was for the township to interact with the Kanta Chapter. And so I know there's going to be a lot of historians saying, yeah, that's what, that's supposed to happen. But when you have a, you know, legislation saying that they are home rule municipality, I don't know if we're taking those home rule municipality concepts from the outside off the Navajo Nation and then applying it here. Or, you know, and then you have the Supreme Court opinion saying, this is what a home rule is. You know, you, you start to wonder, okay, then that means the township at Kanta has a lot of power. And so, you know, we would have to specify and outline those powers that the township doesn't have. So they have a great amount of authority if you're reading this Navajo Supreme Court case. Having said that, can we create more townships? Yes. Can we create under the existing LGA? Yes, because RDC is currently empowered with the ability to create other municipal forms of government. RDC or TCDC, they've already created the AFOGS, the Alternative Form of Government. There's another part of the law in Section 103E that says that chapters can create ordinances to adopt models of municipal forms of government that are established by RDC. So theoretically, RDC could create those municipal models. We could add council, council manager form of government that the outside does. We could add townships. Maybe we could add home rule that was rejected back in 1995. You know, we could add all of those different municipal forms of government systems and make those available to chapters within the existing LGA. So, you know, I, I'm just saying that it's, it's possible. And so we can also, as Delegate Parrish, Chair Parrish was saying, you know, how do we define the relationships between maybe the townships and what's created, or home rules and what's created that in the chapter? You know, all of those things can also be defined within that same RDC resolution. That, that's possible right now. But, but her question was specifically to Kanta Township. And so, you know, that would require, again, chapters to become LGA certified, to interact and contract intergovernmental agreements with the township. You know, that requires LGA certification. So if you're not LGA certified, that would prevent the township with working with that particular chapter. So again, if you bought, if you adopt models one or three, then that's possible. If you stay with Model 2 and 4, then a non-LGA certified chapter would not be able to collaborate with the Kanta Township. So, you know, there are different ways we can set these things up. And I think that if, if I could explain, you know, some of these additional municipal forms of government and how they work and, you know, how it might work, then, you know, that, that's all possible, and we can figure those things out. But right now, what we're talking about today is just trying to come up with a, an LGA that's workable moving forward. And so with that, Madam Speaker, that concludes my, my response.
Thank you, Mr. Begay, on sharing those perspectives on the township. So colleagues, I believe we did go through the whole queue. And thank you for, to the Resources and Development Committee for putting this as a Navajia Ticket Work Session today. I think there were several recommendations that were made of proposing the four modules to the public and also the communities. And we did, later on this afternoon, we will post the PowerPoint onto council's website. So then that could be accessible to everybody. So then we can share that link as well, once it is posted. But I think one area that I heard continuously out the day was how can the four models and other models that were presented, any other ideas? I believe that it does need to come back for public feedback. So I know there were public, public forums that were done in the past when different proposals were coming through council during the 22nd, 23rd, and also the 24th. Now we need, how has that changed throughout, since after post pandemic as well? Has those views or recommendations changed since then? So I think that Office of Navajo Government Development, you know, we would really appreciate your assistance if, if we could present these proposals back out to the public and getting that, that feedback. And we can work with our Resources and Development to do that. And Mr. Roger Begay from DOJ to, you know, putting that presentation together for the public. I know there were certain areas that were initiatives that went out to public hearings throughout this past council or within this council, even with the school reapportionment plans and the burials, so the homesite leasing. So I know those are different policy areas that, you know, it impacts the whole nation as a whole. So it would have to, my sense would be always to go back to the public and get their feedback and the chapter's feedback. So I think next steps would include, you know, putting back out and hosting public hearings that would have to be collaboration between Navajo Division of Community Development, Navajo Office of Navajo Government Development, and also yourself with the Department of Justice, Mr. Roger Begay, and, you know, with the Speaker's Office as well, to see gathering those recent comments and recommendations, especially after post-COVID. I know things are always changing. We also got an update that the virtual meeting amendment that was made to Title 26, we did receive all, we received 20, 56 resolutions. So now what are the next steps? And the next steps would include, you know, the chapters adopting their own resolution if they do want to go that route of virtual attendance or not, and then creating those policies. So I know Mr. Roger Begay already has a template going to assist those chapters that do wish to do so. So those are some going, ongoing initiatives that we have and have heard throughout the day. And thank you, colleagues, for all your feedback. And Mr. Roger Begay, I know you're still finalizing Option 3 and 4, the underline and strikeouts. So we did go over the, we did forward over Option 1 and 2, the underline and overstricken document. So once Option 3 and 4 are available, then we can proceed with some type of public hearings back out in our communities, our agencies. So I think that would be, this step was first initially the presentation to, to council here of all those proposals. So we could also ask Navajo Government Development to also be in that process. And somehow we have to put educational materials together to post that back out to the public as well. But our office, my office can also work with, with each departments here. And then if there is other initial meetings, logistical meetings that need to happen to present these ideas and proposals back to the community. So, and. Okay, we do have Chair Eugenio Charles Newton online and then also Delegate So. So that was just a recap of what we, what was shared since 9:00 AM, colleagues. But we'll continue the work session for, if you have any specific questions on what was presented today. Chair Eugenio Charles Newton, I believe you are on Zoom. Feel free to unmute.
Speaker, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have the floor.
Thank you. I've been on the line since 9:30 this morning, and I appreciate any of these presentations that have been given today. I just have one question. How are you guys, or how are you planning to present these four options to the Navajo people? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Eugenio Charles Newton. And we can go back to our presenters here today. Well, for the lead, we'll have Mr. Roger Begay.
Yeah, Delegate Charles Newton, for your question. I guess that's another good reason for this work session is just to try to help me plan how to do some of this. Because I have, like I said, I've done several presentations already. And so if we were going to do the public hearing route, I would certainly appreciate some assistance in doing that, whether that's through Mr. Sosi's office and/or, you know, Mr. Mitchell's office. You know, I'm certainly open and willing to do that. You know, my, I guess my initial thought was that leadership would choose one of the models and we would, you know, work together on focusing on one of the models. But again, if we wanted to get some feedback on the four models from the, you know, our people, that, you know, I'm, again, I'm open to doing that. And I'll facilitate in any way to get the information out to the Navajo public for their feedback on, on this process. So I don't know if Mr. Mitchell, or actually Mr. Charlie and Mr. Sosi have any feedback on that question?
Yes, from the Office of Navajo Government Development and the Commission on Navajo Government Development, our commissioners have established a subcommittee to look at the four models. And they will be beginning their meetings here shortly to at least make the determination as to make a presentation to the Navajo people to say, this is the one that we would like to pursue. to pursue. And obviously, that won't be the council's voice, but at least they'll look at the different models and and go out and inform the Navajo people that this is the model that we prefer. In addition to that, they also want to review the concepts of regionalization to see what that means and whether or not they will support it. So that's one of the plans from the five agency representatives or persons commissioners nominated by the five agencies. So that's the plan and we can always facilitate and help with establishing public comments and discussions. The only thing with that would be it always takes money when you go out there to do these things. Just be mindful of that. Thanks.
Colleagues, we do have Delegate So in queue.
Okay, Nana, I was gonna touch up on money. We really can't get much out there information. So I think that, you know, Oban, it's us case, we have two elections that's gonna happen this year. The primary election is not, I don't think we can meet any type of deadlines pertaining to one of the three ways to change Title 26. And that's just straight out getting a referendum. I think that a referendum is pretty much allowing our people to be part of the, of making policy. And earlier, our people are the ones that are coming to the delegates, they chapter the D, chapter D, and or, you know, other other scenarios, you know, that us, we delegates were like social workers. One night, one 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 day, we may be, you know, providing social, you know, assistant to a person that's trying to get help pertaining to social service or, you know, you know, we're either something out there. But these laws are created so that these individuals at the local level are supposed to have some responsibilities. But when it comes to it. But I think that that really puts the leadership in a position to, you know, which way should I should I vote? Because at the local level, again. But we have to get that information out there. And I think that through a referendum will allow the Navajo people to make a decision, just like how they decided to reduce the council. Allowing the Navajo people to go to the polls to change and put the four options on the You know, those are just 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 some of my, you know, one of my thoughts. And even with the with the finances, you know, we get all the chapter back into what the previous laws, what the chapters had to meet and rescind that Budget and Finance Committee resolution. And that way, we hold all the chapters to be accountable, whether they get funding or not. But the local level, there's chapters that are good, there's chapters that are bad. And but every day, you know, direct services is what we are asked to. As an example, burial assistant. I get a call, burial assistant, they haven't called me. I get on the phone to Mr. Thomas Cody, Mr. Cody, you have an issue over here in Western Navajo. You need to provide direct services. They follow up or at times they don't. And we're the one that's trying to administer the direct services. And in my mind is, why is it that we are administering, trying to administer direct services, but we have people that's being paid in payroll? Are they up to, you know, do they want to do their work? There's employees that do their work really well. They're on top of things and things like that. I think that moving forth, just a recommendation is that we do try to look at the general election to try to get this on the ballot because we have an election that's already paid for. And then at the same time, we can pass legislation, I think by law, it's 90 days or 60 days. Just make those times meet. That way, we can allow to add that initiative or allow that referendum to be added to the general election. They're forced to do that. If you give them many different choices again, it's gonna be the same concept. But give it to the people and have them make that hard cold decision and let's work with that process. Even regionalization, why don't we just put on an initiative or a ballot? Referendum and reduce the chapters from 24, 110 to 24. Delegate Nez alluded to funding mechanism. If we don't really look at how we should generate funding, 2032, Navajo or APS power plants are gonna shut down. Once that shuts down, 24 million, how are we gonna replace that again? 24 million in revenue of royalty is gonna go away. How are we gonna tighten our belt? Who are we gonna send home? I really hope that the administration, the legislative branch or the executive branch You're the entity that is supposed to execute these things. That's the issue. There's the door. We'll hire somebody that will, that is willing to do that, to do that work. And those are just some of my thoughts in this. Really, we need to look at ways to look at funding to, so that we can get these public hearings completed and based on. And that way, we can get the Office of Government Development out there, Community Development out there, and Department of Justice out there to bring this. The other is that the other reform mechanism is that any laws that are codified in Title, just like Title 26, to change anything that's codified, I think that a mechanism that it has to go through a public hearing really needs to be explored because one day, one of us would say, hey, let's change this law. We just go and change the law, not knowing the ripple effects, how it's gonna impact those people out there. In Title 26, when, if council change changes this, how is it gonna impact the local level? We need to get these analysis done from the programs that will indirectly work with Because we want to know what that ripple effect is because whichever way we vote, I always say, we will, whether we vote green or we vote red, we impact somebody's home. We impact their home in a positive way and in a bad way. Earlier, we just had the legislation pertaining to the youth, the summer youth program. There was chapters that needed it, there's chapters that really didn't need it, there's chapters that don't need it. And you guys providing this again, this is my second round. And for eight years, two terms, people roll up their sleeve for Title 26 and they crash and burn at the end. Somewhere, we have to get this through. We have to get the Navajo people to 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 make a decision. Let them be part of the decision making. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So also, we have number two recommendations that were put before this Abekia Ticket Committee. One was for referendum legislations and one also for public hearings through the conjunction of three offices. So that would be Navajo Division of Community Development and also Office of Navajo Government Development, along with the Department of Justice. And we also have Chair Jesus back in the chamber as well. Chair, Chair Jesus sits directly, the chapters are underneath the RDC oversight. Do you have any final recommendations as well?
Yeah, Madam Speaker and also my colleagues that are present here. And then to our staff that are providing this presentation again. And to our listeners on the call, we do have some chapter staff and possibly even officials that are on the call. Now, again, this Title 26 issue, there's this practice in the Western world where we have to make some decisions as policymakers. So today, you know, there was four models that were presented to us and the concept of how do we best rectify this issue so that all the chapters throughout Navajo Nation can consistently and uniformly operate in their functional areas, being the five management system. So with that said, we look here and are listening to the individuals that act, that are the boots on the ground and trying to address this issue, some of the historical attempts that have been made to change Title 26. The option that I'd like to give again is we're talking about a referendum and we're wanting to say we're gonna put these four models, but I think that internally, we have to break it down to two, to the two best models that we see would be most appropriate. Whether if it's ASC providing the education or Navajo Government Development, with our legal counsel here from DOJ to provide that education. And I think the referendum would be a faster approach, but I think that still lies with, what, getting 56 chapter resolutions again? I don't know if that's the approach to that. And then the other recommendation is we're wanting to set these changes. And I know that the chapters are wanting that decentralization of government operation. What happens, you know, in such circumstances that do they, they don't abide by these particular laws that is applicable to them to operate at the local level? You know, there's, there's a chapter out there that's operating as a 638 program, not really per se the chapter, but we got the REMA. I don't know how good that particular operation is happening. And we've got the LGA certified chapters. And it was mentioned here by our legal counsel, Mr. Begay, that some of these certified chapters want to get decertified. I don't, we don't want to do anything with it. They told us that it's supposed to be that Winter Rock is gonna give us the reins so that we can fully, you know, run with our local government operation here, but it doesn't work that way is one of their biggest concern. So as Resources Development Committee, when we heard about this, I really think that the the way to address this is through a regionalization effort with the alternative form of government. You know, quorum is one of the big issues, it still is. Yesterday, I seen it with St. Michael's Chapter, we're waiting for quorum, didn't get our meeting underway until 45 minutes later. It's just like people have, the local leadership have to guess of the vagueness of these particular law provisions. How do we get to that uniform operation? And that's what, that's what the big question is. And again, we look to our executive branch colleagues here in leading the policymakers down that path of how do you want this change to happen? How do you see it to be the best and fast approach? Chapters are really not out there to do their job as intended, especially some of the chapters that are very rural, their offices are closed. You know, just like Speaker So said, who's the one that gets the message? I don't think it's DCD, I think it's us as delegates. And I think that alternative form of government would also be a cost savings because I know one of the big issues that has been coming up in the past is. You know, with my 12 years of working at the chapter level, I really don't know what the vice president does. The vice president at times will probably just count the quorum when a chapter meeting is going, but in actuality, the person that's supposed to be pushing the project is the vice president, but who's pushing the project? It's the coordinator. Or is that where we're gonna make that change to? Or is that where we're going to make that change too? And these have to be bold decisions. But you know, we have to look at it from a point where it has to be cost savings to the Navajo Nation government. Because if I can, you know, state that the Resources and Development Committee is trying to strategize on how we can get alternative revenue stream to the Navajo Nation with the help of Division of Natural Resources. Because they're the division, that division is the division that provides that revenue back to Navajo Nation with all the leases, the agreements that we have to have in place. 110 chapters are operating every year and what is going to be our plan? And the plan is to regionalize. So, but the education needs to go back out to our constituents. We have a different vision. But how do we best come together to foresee that vision that we are talking about here today and bring it to fruition, realization here within possibly another year, year and a half? Maybe that's another direction we need to go first. Bring a task force back together that comprises of members of the 25th Navajo Nation Council with the executive team and then Office of Navajo Government Development to really start from where did the last task force leave off? And what were some of the lessons learned from that? And maybe embed it with the new task force that's going to be developed if we really want these changes to happen? And I'm so thankful Speaker Curly was able to put this work session on today. And again, it is really to bring some accountability, transparency, and providing those services that our chapters are supposed to provide at the local level to our people. Maybe through this, we can exercise the full, proper way of carrying out certain activities at the chapter level. So again, Madam Speaker, I just wanted to put that in there. But you know, with your direction, you know, a task force to start talking about referendum would possibly be the right approach. And again, that was RDC's discussion. Madam Speaker, thank you.
All right, thank you Chair Jesus. And we'll do the legislative history on some of the task force that was done. I think I served on that task force back in 2019. So I'll look through my history boxes. And that was a referendum for the plans that were coming forth. But I was a policy analyst. But I believe that a task force was developed either through RDC or NABEETI. But we can relay that information and with the help of Jalissa here. But in terms of relaying back the message back to our people, I know Mr. Begay did say that he's working on some of the final drafts for Option 3 and 4. And then so the four options is totally separate than the regionalization. So I think that's something that we also need to highlight, that the regionalization efforts is separate from the four models that was presented from Mr. Begay. But I'm just really glad that some of my colleagues did provide some of that feedback that if those can also be a point of discussions if there's going to be any public hearings or referendums. But I do like that direction of creating back that task force and looking at what were the lessons learned or what were some of the draftings that were all put? Because I think we do have a Title 2 Subcommittee as well that is doing the same with the three branches and Council and our Standing Rules of Order. So we do have a Subcommittee that's working adjacently. But that type of framework or, you know, Subcommittee can be established to look at Title 26 too. So those are just some options that were recommended here from our colleagues today. So I just really appreciate the deep discussions that has happened. So on our agenda, I think we are talking about recommendations. So if you do have recommendations, we have Chair So.
Yeah, Nana. One area is that I know earlier, Roger, you spoke about reasons, I guess, regional planning, or that concept of regional is not new. And you indicated that it's been part of chapter government as far back as the early 80s. But what I'm getting to is that there's a couple of regions that really, you know, that came through the Council and was given that some sort of regional planning. And you have like the NOS region. And then you have the Zizin region. They're established by some sort of legislation. And I'm not too sure if there's any other regions out there, but I know there's three of them or so. But what I'm getting to is that have, and I did ask this question at one point and I never got a response. How is this regional planning or that regional, that regional, how is that concept? Is it really working? Because I hear one that comes to me and that says, And I say, oh, okay, while you guys went into regional planning, you guys have to play in the sandbox nicely. And but what I'm getting to is that I think that we need to get a thorough report on if that planning is really working. Having that regional planning with separate chapters. That planning, the effectiveness, is it just another meeting that's added to the chapter's responsibilities? Well, you know, there should be more, should they be looking at that or really focusing back on their home chapter area? So, and just wondering if they have made a report to you guys on whether it's Government Development or to the Department of Justice, say that, hey, this is really working? I don't know, I haven't seen a report. But I see that as another example was district chapters. They'll have district chapter meetings. I mean, like so many chapters in one district would meet. They don't play nice to each other. So those are just some of the thoughts. And usually the, that reporting mechanism. Just wondering if we have anything on record or so we could try to get that. Because I think that's the information we should get too. Are the chapters really working with each other? What do we do? You have to put your feet down. And I think that we have to, as I was saying, putting our feet down, let's give it to the people, make the people make that decision. So, thank you.
Yeah, Shaja, Speaker So. Next, we still have Chair Jesus and also followed by Delegate Arviza, Chair.
Yeah, Nana, Speaker Curly and also colleagues. You know, this is a really great discussion. I know that this particular issue was brought up before Resources and Development Committee by our legal counsel. Not having an approved plan of operations for the regional council, the agency council, nor the district council meetings that are currently happening out there across Navajo Nation. And this is where we need clarification. And I understand like for the district chapter, delegate chapter meetings was for the purpose of coming up with this regional concept of regional projects. But in actuality, the community members, when you go before community members at a chapter meeting with a district regional project, community members always have a strong opposition saying that these monies that we get here at the chapter is for us registered voters. We're not ready to share with the neighboring chapter to come up with this regional project. And that's where it kills the idea of trying to come up with a regional project. And the reason why it's very important is we've got the New Mexico legislators that are very well versed about cost savings. And cost savings will happen through regional project concept. But our constituents are always reminding elected officials that this is our money as a chapter community and we do not wish to try to cost share with our neighboring chapters for these regional projects. We want our own, you know, facility or project within our own chapter communities. So right there, it is very hard. And I think that's one of the very reasons of why regional projects within districts usually don't go any forward in terms of planning or design. So again, what Speaker So did bring up, it is a really good question. How are we going to go forward? Are we going to allow that opportunity? Because when I was at Rock Springs Chapter as a coordinator, then Speaker Damon was our council delegate. So they called it the District 6 Council. So we had the chapters under currently Delegate Lester Yasi's region. We will all meet, we did a plan of operation and it was planning to meet on a quarter basis. The voting representatives were going to comprise of the three elected officials with the chapter coordinator of their permit. And the stipends for the officers of District 6 was going to be the amount of $150. But they wanted all the chapters to contribute to one account and have the officers be paid that way. But I think that, I don't know if that went forward. But this is where it creates that confusion of wells for district and then we got the regional, the agency council. So again, this is a really good discussion in hopes that maybe we can decide on how we want to go forward with these particular sidebar council meetings that has currently been, that was brought to RDC at beginning of our tenure. So I just wanted to add that, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Thank you Chair, Delegate Arviza.
We have to educate our communities before we make major changes. Referendum is going to work against the government. It always does, look what it did from '28 to '24. That because the communities are not informed. We have to go back and educate before we make big changes as Council and tribal government. They have a real good idea of what's coming. Yes, they're going to say, oh, do away with the chapters because they don't come to the chapters.
Thank you Delegate Arviza for that input. There's that input and recommendation to educate the public again on the purposes of chapter government and the responsibilities. Colleagues, are there any other recommendations that you would like to propose? We are on 3D of our agenda. Right, colleagues, so just a background information. Jalissa did track down, it was a Title 26 Task Force that was through RDC and it was a Subcommittee. And that was from the years of 2015 to 2018. It was through the 23rd Council. And the resolution that they, it went through Council and it was approved and that is CAU-45-16. And that was vetoed by President Begay. So just from historical context of where the task force finished or worked up to. So we can forward that copy out as well, that resolution that was vetoed. So that was the last attempt for our regionalization. So we can take a look at that as well. So thank you colleagues, and I don't see anybody else in queue. Mr. Begay, do you have any final thoughts? Or, okay, no. So thank you, Mr. Begay. I know you've been working very hard for many years on proposing these four proposals. And with the Navajo Nation Government Development, we will be coordinating that meeting and to see where we can start pushing these educational efforts from your office. So colleagues, there will go down to number four announcements. I know that we do have a Budget and Finance Work Session going on right now that is in the Budget and Finance Room on the Procurement Act, I believe. I believe that's what is, our work session is on. Or any standing committee announcements, Chair Eugenia Charles Newton?
Thank you Speaker. Speaker, just a announcement in terms of Law and Order Committee has a work session scheduled tomorrow in Albuquerque to talk about the Title 17 updates that will be presented to Council. In addition to that, our Gaming Subcommittee meeting that was scheduled for Saturday has been postponed to a later date. I can explain to you the reason for that at a later time, Speaker. But those are just the announcements for this week, thank you.
Thank you Chair. That is another huge announcement from LOC. I know they're tackling down the whole Title 17. So those are another sets of amendments that will be coming forth from one of our standing committees. So there is many ongoing